...in the Touch a Truck event on Saturday and to say thanks to the city employees that participated. It was, again, a very nice event. Unfortunately, a little colder than most of us would have liked, but nevertheless, it was a very nice event and did draw a lot of people to downtown Winona. I'd like to ask Steve Rem to come up and give a report on behalf of the students and chaperones that went to Masato. And I think that was the plan, right?
Hello, my name is Steve Rem, and I'm one of the adult chaperones who went on the recent trip to Masato, Japan. On behalf of the city of Masato, I would like to present to the city of Winona a couple of paperweights that were custom-made by a high-tech, precision machining and manufacturing company called Kyouyou, which has been in operation since 1980. The adult chaperones got the chance to visit the Kyouyou facility and were given a tour to see the plant and some of the equipment in operation. There are roughly 100 employees that work there, and they design and manufacture precision metal stamping dies and injection molds. They also design and manufacture automated machinery. They have computer-aided design capability and computer-controlled machining equipment and could take a part or mold from concept to final manufactured assembly. They also have coordinate measuring machines with the capability of precise measurement to check the dimensional features of the final product, such as holes, slots, et cetera, to ensure quality. In addition, we saw what I would call a prototype area with manual and less sophisticated machining equipment for low-volume production and prototypes. We also saw fully automated equipment for higher-volume production and very specialized parts. It was a very interesting tour, and I'm glad that I had the opportunity to chaperon and represent Winona in Masato. Thank you.
This is a brochure of the facility, and here are two bookmarks or rather, paperweights.
Looks like Nike to me. Very nice. Thank you. We were just talking about logos for the last hour. Thank you very much. Was there anybody else here that was planning to speak about the trip to Masato?
Yes, quite a few.
Okay, all right. State your name and address, if you would.
Hello, I'm Samuel Graff, and I was one of the 25 students who got to go on the trip to Masato, Japan, and I just wanted to share my favorite part about the trip. My favorite part was definitely getting to know my host family. I was kind of nervous at first about meeting them just because I was going to spend four nights with them, and I was a little bit nervous about making a good first impression and everything, but I right away felt like I was a member of their family. And even though it was 6,000 miles away from home, I never got homesick just because I always felt like I was at home when I was with them. Just a quick story, I remember the first night I was with them, they asked me what my favorite music was or like type of music or band, so I said I liked Coldplay. And then the next night, they were throwing kind of like a party, and I listened closely because they had music playing in the background, and I asked, "Is this Coldplay?" And they're like, "Yeah." And they had gone out and bought two Coldplay CDs. So it was definitely an amazing experience for me, and I hope that it's a friendship that can continue to last for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Caroline Dahlke, and I was also a student who went on the trip. I would like to share my favorite part, too. Mine was also the homestay, just because I got to stay with one of the homestays who stayed with me in October when they came here, and it was just really nice to meet her family. And she didn't have any siblings, but her parents really welcomed me in and treated me like I was one of their daughters. And it was definitely one of the best experiences for me on the trip. The four nights, the four days I was there, the first night we got to see them and got to meet them again, we had this huge meal, and the last night I was there, they tried to replicate the meal because they knew that I liked it. And they definitely, that night, one of their cousins came, and they brought me all the presents and brought my whole family gifts. So it was definitely like my favorite part of the trip because I just loved like meeting the family, and it was just, it was great. It was wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
And as her mother, I can attest that she cried like a baby when we had to say goodbye to Miku and her family. Briefly, my favorite part was the education side of it. We were able to tour several facilities, a couple middle schools, a couple high schools, and an early childhood facility that was preschool and kindergarten-centered. And my takeaway was, in my head, I assumed Japanese education was pretty kill and drill. And then after having been there, I realized that unfortunately, we are the kill and drill and the teach-to-the-test country over there. I did not see any technology in classrooms, old green chalkboards, no smartboards, no iPads, no phones, and kids took notes on paper with a pencil. And that seems to be going pretty well for them. They also have a lot of, they also have a lot of hands-on learning. Every school had a garden on site, as well as a barn where they raise pigs and cows. So the first thing we saw pulling up in our bus was a student walking a cow down the street on a leash. Good life skills, learn how to raise your food. So that was sort of the biggest thing that I enjoyed, was seeing how they raised babies and educate them. So, thank you. It was a wonderful experience. I highly recommend it.
Thank you, Leslie. Anybody else here to share their stories? Okay, all right.
My name is Robin Trombetta. I was supposed to go two years ago when Michelle went, and I got sick.
She was my roommate that was absent for the whole trip.
I got sick a week before and couldn't go, so I finally got to go this year. And I don't really want to say anything specific about the trip. My family, we've moved a lot. We were military, and I feel like we've always kind of had shallow roots. And this is one of those programs that makes those roots grow deeper in Winona. It was just a great overall experience, and I'm glad that I got to go, even though I had to wait three years. And I think probably the best thing for everyone was not just going to Japan, but I think the kids and the adults both, you got to meet people that you wouldn't necessarily meet, and there's a bond that everyone will have, the kids especially. There are kids in that group that probably never said hello to each other before they became part of this group, and they'll have a friend for life.
Thank you. Anybody else here to share the story? I guess not. I'll just conclude by saying we are celebrating the 20th anniversary of our sister-city relationship between Winona and Masato. And the plan is that this fall, or late fall, late November, early December, delegation from Winona will be going again to Masato, and myself included. And Michelle Alexander is also planning on going. And the city of Masato was asked that we bring a girls' basketball team and a boys' basketball team, and some DJs, and they have some very specific ideas about what cheerleaders and jazz bands, costumes. All kinds of things, and so that, those details are being worked out. As of right now, I am planning on going, and Michelle is, too, and you're making me get even more excited about the trip. So thank you for sharing your stories. Also tonight, I have a proclamation I'd like to read. It's a proclamation starting, "Whereas adults who provide alcohol to those below the legal drinking age of 21 are placing those youth at risk for health, safety, and legal problems; and whereas alcohol used by young people is dangerous, not only because of the risks associated with acute impairment, but also because of the threat to their long-term development and well-being; and whereas it is illegal to give or allow your teen's friends to drink alcohol in your home, even with their parents' permission; and whereas anyone found guilty of providing alcohol to youth can face up to a $3,000 fine and one year in jail. In addition to any civil action that can be brought as a result of damages or injury related to the offense; and whereas adults have the authority and responsibility to our youth to provide them with alternative opportunities by creating alcohol-free activities; and whereas drug-free action alliance through parents who host lose the most, Don't Be a Party to Teenage Drinking provides educational materials to raise community awareness regarding this illegal and unhealthy practice; and whereas the city of Winona encourages residents to refuse to provide alcoholic beverages to underage youth and to take the necessary steps to discourage the illegal and unhealthy practice, including the reporting of underage drinking by calling their local police; and whereas be it resolved that the city of Winona not only discourages the use of alcohol by those below the legal age of consumption, but also exhorts all residents of Winona to refuse to provide alcoholic beverages to those underage youth, and will continue to take the necessary steps to discourage this illegal and unhealthy activity. Now therefore, I, Mayor Mark Peterson, hereby proclaim May 2016, as Parents Who Host Lose the Most, Don't Be a Party to Teenage Drinking." And we have a couple people here tonight, I believe, that want to speak to this issue briefly. Phil Huerta and Peyton LeBlanc, are they in the audience? Okay.
Hello, everybody. My name is Helen Bagshaw, and I'm part of ASAP, which we had the grant from the DFC. We've got $100,000 each year to go out into Winona County and talk to our teens about prescription drugs and alcohol and what we can do. And we have made a most fantastic start with this. You might have seen our prescription drug bring-back day, and we had over, I'll tell you exactly how many pounds in a second here. We also had a town hall where we had over 120 people come to learn about what they can do to help their teens with alcohol and prescription drugs. We had over 240 pounds of prescription medications collected in just four hours. I know that is kind of hard to, but that's a lot. And also raising awareness, you know, that is key as well. So while it's prom and while it's graduation, we just want to say, we want to celebrate everything great about being a teenager, but we do want to make sure that we are keeping our kids healthy by not encouraging drinking, because we know as a teenager, you start drinking at 15, you're five times as likely to become a serious drinker by the time you're in your twenties. So as a nurse at Winona Health, working in the intensive care unit, I've seen the bad side of what can happen. So please get on board with Parents Who Host. Go to our webpage, just tap in ASP Winona, and you can sign the pledge to support as a parent, as a family member, you know, to know what's going on in your home and, you know, not to supply drink to your teenagers. And I've got a teenager here, and you don't want to hear me rambling on, so I'm really happy. So come on in, and you can introduce yourself, and thank you so much for the proclamation. It's fantastic.
I'm Peyton Borckhardt. LeBlanc was a bit of a misquote.
Sorry about that.
Me and several other students at Winona High School have joined ASAP, and it has given us a sense of community. I have also noticed in our school, since this has begun, that more people are seeming to notice. I have also noticed a slight decrease in talk about drugs and alcohol at school, about, as in procuring drugs and alcohol for their own use. That's about all I have to say. I'm sorry.
That's fine. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Just one final thing from me, just a reminder to people, tomorrow, the filing opens tomorrow, and it'll be open for two weeks. There's the mayor and two, or three council positions open, as well as numerous other elected offices to run for. So if you're interested, filing starts tomorrow. Now I'll ask our city manager if he has anything.
I do have a few things, Your Honor, and members of the council. Just first off, wanted to thank the Friendship Center for having a great event and being part of their celebration for their accreditation. They're the only center in Minnesota that is so accredited, and they're doing great work there and looking forward to seeing what holds for the future. I also have a new intern who's going to be working with me, Rebecca Strencha, who's a senior at Winona State, and she's, I'm going to have her working on a project with Malia, along with showing her the rest of the city, but it's going to have her working on making Winona a dementia-friendly community, which I think will be very important for us as we go forward. The previous intern, Travis Brearley, is actually was hired and is the city administrator in Lewiston as a contract employee for CETA. So he had a very eventful and unfortunate first week of events, but he's hit the ground running. And lastly, I'd like to ask Chad to step forward and address a few of the items that were left over from the last meeting.
Mayor and council, at the last meeting, Councilman Double asked for an update on the dog park, so I'm here to give an update on that. Following the last pre-council meeting that we had several weeks ago, we've gotten a lot of feedback. Primarily, the feedback has been, can we do something yet this year? They know that staff did mention during the presentation that we would look at budgeting something for '17, but the feedback has been, well, can we get this going and get something started? This is long overdue. So we would like to have an operating dog park this fall. Our department will schedule a public forum to discuss further information we've compiled regarding each possible location fundraising possibilities, and the key there is that we would certainly take donations to get this off the ground and certainly volunteer investment in the dog park. We will plan a public forum this summer, and then following the forum, we'll bring a final recommendation that would include the location and funding sources to council. Councilman Double asked as well about future ordinances. Once the dog park is established, the Park Rec Department will provide recommendations to update current ordinances related to dogs, for example, on and off-leash permission throughout the city. Unless there's any other question, that's the timeline. We'll operate now going forward.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Here.
Councilman Thurlie.
Here.
Craig.
Here.
Alexander.
Here.
Ayden.
Here.
Borzakowski.
Here.
Double.
Here.
And under the public hearings section, the first two items are not public hearings, but they need to be addressed before we proceed to the public hearing. So the first item is the 2016 State Aid Street Reconstruction Project, Grand Street from Sarnia to Wabashaw Street.
Move to approve the attached resolution.
Second.
Motion by Jerry, seconded by Michelle. Any discussion? Michelle?
I just have to disclose that I do own a property that is going to be affected by this reconstruction on Grand Street. That's, I have no other discussion, I just want to make that clear.
Okay, thank you. If there isn't any other discussion, we will vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Kerry's.
Item 2.2 is the 2016 Grand Street Reconstruction Project feasibility report and resolution ordering hearing.
I move to approve the attached resolution.
Second. Motion by Jerry, seconded by George. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Kerry's.
And item 2.3 is the public hearing for the proposed 2016 Grand Street Reconstruction Project and the preliminary assessment rule. There'll be water service line replaced at 32 properties, and the resolution would order the improvements and advertise for bids. It's a public hearing.
Okay, I'll declare the public hearing open. And Keith, is there anything you want to say first?
Mayor and council, this is the typical assessments we have when we look at the water services to see if they're non-copper, if they're galvanized, we replace those, or if they're over a certain age, we replace those. So this is a list of all those water services.
I do have a question about this project. I know that there was some discussion about narrowing the street rather than in order, in an effort to save some of the trees. Do you know if that's the case?
I don't know on this project if it is what the width is going to be, but the width is determined by the state in each case. It's being their state aid projects, we have to go to a certain width, and I really can't tell you on this one. Just kidding.
And in this case, I believe we asked the state for permission to have a narrower street, and I think they granted it. I wish Brian was here tonight to address that, but I'm hoping that's the case.
That's the impression I had.
Okay. As I know there were concerns along there about saving some of the trees, one in particular, which was a very special anniversary tree, I think that I'm hoping is saved. I just wanted to bring that up.
I will get the answer and give it off to all of you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, thank you. Is there anybody here to speak to this during the public hearing time? Anybody here wish to speak? State your name and address.
I'm Kathy Benson, 618 Grand Street. I just have a question about the trees, and we don't have any information given to us if the street is going to be widened, why some of the trees are going. Some are marked, some aren't. And we just like to know what's the time span, what do we have, what timeline are we looking at? And a lot of questions that we just don't have, don't know who to ask, I guess.
Can you answer any more of those questions, Keith?
I'll have to get your name and number and get you the specifics, your specific questions.
Okay.
Do you want to just provide that to me?
Okay. I know there's a few people here that have the same question.
Maybe we could have a sign-up sheet over there on the table that they can all sign in with their questions and names and addresses, and we'll make sure those questions are addressed.
Okay.
The specs call for the mobile.
It says they are clearing 21 trees. We just maybe don't know specifically which ones. But that might have something to do with where they are. Somewhere close to the road where I'd rather look for it. I don't know about the rest. No one in this town knows.
Michelle was pointing out to me that it does say in our packet of information that 21 trees are going to be removed. I'm assuming some of those are the ones that are marked now. I don't know if that helps answer some of your questions.
Yeah, it looks like they're replacing some of them.
And replacing some, so with much smaller trees, I'm sure.
Right.
So I guess, you know, in the interest of time here, if your questions are addressed there, city staff will get back to you and answer those questions. Anybody else wish to speak? Yes? Come to the podium and state your name and address.
Don Anderson from Minnesota City, speaking for my wife, who can't be here tonight, who owns a house on Grand Street. It's really a question. We have our list of addresses on Grand Street, and we also have a list of the preliminary assessment rule, which is quite a bit shorter than the ownership. Should we have received a greater number of assessment names?
Okay, Monica will answer that question.
The property owners were provided the page from the assessment rule showing the amount being proposed for assessment for their property. So rather than mailing the entire seven or 10-page document to each property owner, you are only provided the page dealing with your property.
Okay, so I'm guessing everybody on the street gets an assessment of some kind.
There are 32 properties that are having water and sewer, or water service lines replaced, so all of those on the list that had water lines would be assessed for that.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else wish to speak to this topic? Again, anybody here wish to speak to this topic? One final time before I close the public hearing? Yes?
My name's Mike Knox. My son lives on Grand Street. And I guess I missed something. I mean, what's the whole reason behind the project? I mean, just briefly, just a...
Mayor and council, there's a certain number of streets in town that are considered state aid streets, and in all cases, they're primary collectors, primary traffic routes, and we need to keep them up to a certain level, standard. This will be reconstructing that to get it up to the current standard for a street. It's a reconstruction of the street.
Thank you. Thank you. One final time, anybody here wish to speak to this topic? If not, I'll declare the public hearing closed and ask if there's a motion from council. So move.
Second.
Motion by George, seconded by Pam. Discussion? Al?
I think relative to the construction season, it seems to be a little late for this going out for bids. Is that going to be an issue with this, Mr. Nelson?
We anticipate it'll be appropriate this year.
Okay. George?
Just, Keith, just one other question. When they're replacing the water line, and perhaps I maybe have a bad sewer line, we can replace, I mean, it's going to be my cost, of course, but they can replace that then as well, too?
Absolutely.
And how will those people know that they can do that?
We haven't contacted them for doing that.
Okay.
But it would be appropriate to do it during construction or before construction, along that line, if they have a bad service.
Okay. Do you typically not notify homeowners about that?
They'll be notified about the project, but we won't lay out about services, about the sewer services. We would just tell them the project's coming.
So if they were to perhaps replace their sewer line, they would just let you know?
It'd be, that place to start, to deal with us first, and then we could make arrangements, because they have to coordinate it with the contractor that's out there, you know, if they hire somebody else, which is probably the case if they have one, we have to make sure that gets coordinated.
So no, I think one sewer line was done on A Street, and that homeowner saved a lot of money.
Yeah.
Because that hole was open, and he did what he could do, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Kerry's.
Under the petitions, requests, and communications, item 3.1, reappointments to the Fine Arts Commission of Deb Ward and Mary Farrell. So moved.
Second. Motion by Michelle, seconded by Al. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Kerry's.
Item 3.2 is the appointment to the Port Authority of Lori Lucas. So moved.
Second. Motion by Michelle, seconded by George. Discussion? I know Lori's in the audience. All right, George?
I look forward to working with her back there, so.
She's lovely. She's so lovely.
Well, I've worked with Lori a lot. I'll second that. I'm sure you will enjoy working with her, so. If there is anything else, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Welcome to the Port Authority, Lori. Welcome to the Port Authority, Lori.
Item three point three is the Grape River Shakespeare Festival Street Closure Request for a twenty-eight furlong footrace on Sunday, July seventeenth. So moved. Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Pam. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Kerry's.
Item three point four, request for closure of West Ninth Street on June eleventh.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion by Jerry, seconded by Michelle. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Kerry's.
Item three point five is the Living Light Church Street, Street Closure Request on Sunday, July third. I move to approve that request. I'd second that.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Pam. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Kerry's.
Item three point six is a request by the Columbus Foundation to dock the Nina and the Pinta at Levy Park, June twenty-eighth through July fifth. Move to approve that request.
Second. Motion by Michelle, seconded by Paul. I do have a question. I'm wondering, have we always closed Levy Park Drive for the days that they're parked down there?
For the last two visits I've been there, yes. We do leave a fire lane for maintenance and emergency, but not for the public.
Are there any concerns about the riverboat, the tour riverboat down there now?
I think they've coordinated where each will be docked, and both Winona State and the tour boat are aware of these boats coming.
What if somebody had some special needs and needed to get down there close to the dock, would they be able to accommodate them?
Ah, Mayor and Council, I think we'll make every accommodation to make the tour boat and Winona State boat fully accessible. We typically block off roads for safety, but if we need to move barricades or move a car, and I don't think that should be an issue, but we can help coordinate that, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Al?
Just, just a comment, these boats have been coming here first, it was the Nina for many years, and the city has always been hospitable to them, and I encourage people, if they haven't seen them, or it's been a while since they've seen them, to go down and take a look, because they're really, really something special to see. It's an honor to have them in Winona.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? If not, let's vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Kerry's.
Item three point seven is the Goodview Gallup Street Closure Request for Saturday, August twentieth. So moved.
Second. Motion by Michelle, seconded by George. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. George, did you have one?
No.
Okay. Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Kerry's.
Item three point eight is Saint Matthews Lutheran School Street Closure of High Street on Thursday, May twenty-sixth. Move to approve that request.
Second. Motion by Michelle, seconded by Jerry. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Kerry's.
Item three point nine is the Anthem Skate Park Report.
All right, and we'll get our report.
Good evening. So with our agreement, opening the park, I'd ask that we give a yearly report where we talk about financials, our activity report and future plans. We'll just start with financials, since we opened in, on October second, we've had twenty-five thousand, one hundred and thirty-seven dollars in sales. That's broken down to the entry fees, seven thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars of that with entry fees. Three thousand, one hundred and thirty-seven dollars has been in concessions, and fourteen thousand, seven hundred and nine dollars have been retail sales. We've invested heavily back into the business. We've doubled our inventory since opening day and also included some new skate features in the skate park. So things that we've done in the last year, we've, we've hosted two contests at Anthem, one called the Christmas Cup and one March Madness. They've both been very well attended and been great for skate tourism. We've had competitors come from Winona, Rochester, Minneapolis, Albert Lee and Lacrosse. We've also started a competitive skate team that consists of six skaters, two of them are adults and four of them kids. So part of being on the skate team, you get free entry to skate whenever you want in the skate shop, and then we also pay their way to competitions, which is great because a lot of our skateboarders are competitive athletes who don't necessarily compete in organized sports. So this gives them an opportunity to be part of a team and also to be competitive. And many of our skaters, all but one, are brand new to skate competitions, and they've done extremely well. So Alex Willard placed first in our March Madness competition. Jack Gardner and Brady Byam placed second and third, respectively, in our Christmas Cup. Jack Gardner, who got invited to the Twin Cities Open, Anthem got invited to the Twin Cities Open at Third Layer, I think the biggest skate park in the state of Minnesota, biggest indoor, and Jack Gardner placed fifth in the thirteen and up, and Drake Pozance placed thirteenth in the expert category, so experts category among, I think, forty-five skaters from all over the state. So placing thirteenth was very impressive, and then got some good news coverage for him. Future plans, we're opening a skate camp this summer. It will consist of weekly sessions starting June sixth, ending August fifth. Campers will learn how to skate with direct instruction from Anthem team rider Drake Pozance, who also has history working at the West Rec and is a licensed teacher. And competitions, the Christmas Cup and March Madness, we're planning on having those be annual events, and we're also hoping to host a summer contest on June twenty-first, which is International Go Skate Day. And then just to wrap up, just some highlights of the year. The park has been extremely well received, both by locals and out-of-town skaters. We have over three hundred waivers signed and one thousand, five hundred and seventy-six daily entries since October second. And that number doesn't include our skate team or the skaters that have season passes. We just haven't been, we track the season passes, but don't track their entries. So just one thousand, five hundred and seventy-six daily entries. Also, highlights, we've had no major injuries. Yes, since we've opened October second, no hospital visits. We've gone through one pack of ice packs, but no, no hospital visits. And we've also had no shoplifting, and unlike the, the last years of the East End skate park, we haven't had any major incidents requiring intervention from staff or law enforcement. And then finally, working with the city has been a great experience. The city's been very responsive to our needs, and we're really excited to be working with Patrick Metten, the new Assistant Recreation Director, as we move forward. So thank you. If there's any questions, I'd gladly answer them.
Congratulations on a very successful, injury-free first year.
Yes, yeah. Some people lost some bets.
Chris Reed lost a bet.
Yeah.
Any other comments, George?
Is there age cutoff where you cannot do this?
No, we have entries from six years old to, I think, fifty-eight.
Is it too late for you, George?
It's too late for me.
Oh.
And I think for a few more. Maybe they'll start a senior category.
Oh, boy.
Yeah, any other questions?
I guess not. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Good job.
Good luck. And next, our unfinished business. Item four point one is to award the contract for municipal lot number twelve, storm sewer and parking lot project. The low bidder was Winona Mechanical with a bid of ninety thousand, eight hundred and twenty-one dollars and fifty cents.
I'd make a motion to adopt the attached resolution awarding the contract to Winona Mechanical.
I'd second that.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Pam. Comments? Questions? I think this is a good project, and looking forward to seeing the results, and that rusty old signpost will be removed as a part of this, I'm assuming? Okay, thank you. I think we're ready to vote. Our jury is coming back. Mayor? Yes.
Where exactly is lot number twelve?
Shide's Bar. Or what used to be. I think we can go ahead and vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Kerry's.
Item four point two is the Small Cities Development Program amended loan agreement.
I would move to authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the loan documents, and subordination would be appropriate.
Second.
Motion by George, seconded by Michelle. Discussion? Al?
I, I would request that Ms. McMartin.
Okay.
Explain what we're doing here. I understand, but...
Get less than the audience to update?
Everybody else would like to know.
Sure. Yes, Mayor and members of council, so before you is an amended loan agreement. You did previously approve the loan agreements related to the grant in July, and many of the rules through deed, small cities block grants are changing. So we had a hundred and fifty thousand dollars planned to draw down from deed to loan to the Morningside Terrace Project. They now require us to use past grant funds that are repaid to the city prior to drawing our funds down. What that did is it left an additional forty thousand, forty-one thousand dollars at deed that we can utilize for the Morningside Terrace Project. So we visited with our deed representatives as to how to best proceed, and they suggested that we amend the loan agreements. The project is about three million dollars. We're a very small part of that, and it's moving along very well. So this would involve an amendment of the forty-one thousand, five hundred and fifty-eight dollars.
Good. Thank you. Any questions or comments before we vote? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Kerry's.
Under new business, item five point one, the environmental review requirements for the Winona HRA.
Well, I'd make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the appropriate certificates and checklets.
Second. Okay, motion by Michelle, seconded by Paul. Discussion? George?
And if they just have a brief on what this is all about, Linda's here as well, too, for everyone's information.
So Mayor and members of council, Linda Betka, the Executive Director of the Housing Authority, is here, and she could give you a summary of the improvements. But because they use federal funds to rehabilitate the Housing Authority-owned properties, the city is considered the responsible entity because their jurisdiction is the city, and we need to make sure that those improvements go through the appropriate environmental review. So we do this each year, we take a look. They are exempt because they're renovating existing properties. But again, Linda is here if there's any questions related to what the specific projects are.
Linda, did you want to add anything?
Thank you. The projects that we're doing this year have been on our five-year plan for the last five years, so there's nothing new on the project this year, but it still requires us to come and make sure that we have your approval. This year's projects will be fall projects. The funding will be available toward the end of June, and the projects consist of re-roofing the Maplewood Townhomes, the apartment buildings themselves. We're going to start a bathroom renovation project at the Schaffner Homes. One of our chief complaints from our elderly residents has been our bathtubs are too high, so we're hoping to start addressing that. And we're replacing appliances at Valley View Tower. Small projects this year, but still very important to our residents.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I'd just like council to notice the very stylish logo that happens to be on the shirt. Just thought I'd point that out.
We're with you.
Thank you. Are we ready to vote? I think we are. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Kerry's.
Item five point two, a request to add a new staff position titled the Natural Resource Sustainability Coordinator.
The city manager, maybe summarize that?
Yes, Your Honor and council, sorry for the title. We tried to find some more words to put in it, but that's the one that we kind of landed on after some effort. Spent the first couple of months since I've arrived looking at the different operations in the city, and the one thing that really stuck out as a need for the community was to have more emphasis on fire inspection. And we just so happened to have an individual in the city that we, that has a skill set for that, and we were asking him to move over and to work with the fire department to really increase the number of inspections that they can get done on a daily basis. He's also, Paul Douglas is also going to hold on to our safety coordinator position because he's very highly trained and skilled in that, and it's a very important position to the city. That's certainly going to take up his time, and so when we look at reallocating his efforts, it leaves our stormwater position open. And in talking with Keith, we know that we have to refill that position because of the requirements from the state, and those are only going to grow in time. And so since that position was already budgeted for, we're going to use those funds and try to add something else to the, to the job description, which we're calling the Sustainability Coordinator. So the, the, the main part of the job is going to be working on stormwater compliance issues, but the person's going to have enough time that we can allocate back out to support the Citizens Environmental Quality Committee and other committees around the city. Winona is blessed with many environmental organizations, from Friends of the Lake to Pollinators and other groups as well. And this position will help serve as a liaison to those groups, and will help guide staff in the council and the community in sustainability efforts as we go forward. One certification process we'd like them to look at is the Green Step City, which many communities in Minnesota have adopted. I believe there's twenty-nine different steps that are part of that program, and we're actually doing many of them already, but getting that certification will help us with grant writing opportunities and will also open up other resources. So we feel that by adding this position, taking over the stormwater, and then working with others throughout the community, it's going to add great value, and it's going to be another leadership step for the city to take when it comes to environmental and sustainability efforts.
Yeah, thank you. Is there a motion? I'll move to approve the added position.
Second.
Motion by Jerry and seconded by Pam. Discussion? George?
What is the salary of that position, Steve? It's actually pointed out to grade twelve. The salary range is forty-eight thousand, zero ninety-eight to sixty thousand, one twenty-two. And again, the majority of the funds for this year will be allocated out of the stormwater fund. Part of this is we're going to need to see what the balance of work is on the sustainability efforts. I do have some funds in my, in my account as well. I won't take them from the mayor's, the mayor's fund.
I think it's depleted already, anyway.
No, it's, anyway, especially if you don't know, Your Honor.
Okay.
But so we, we do have the, the funds available for this position, and then we'll budget for it for 2017 going forward. And this will be a bargaining unit in play? Correct.
Paul?
Well, I'm, I'm supportive of the water quality issues that this position would support, but I'm very concerned about the Green Step City program because it can entail several restrictions on businesses and things down the road to, to be in compliance with that program. A lot of it is tracking, but it also can create some issues for business and for residents moving forward. And so while I'm supportive of the position itself, I'm very concerned that the council should have the opportunity to visit what the Green Step City program is and the twenty-nine factors that are involved with it, and, and that we move very cautiously on that simply because it does impose some very, very limitations on, restrictions on businesses.
That's well noted, and certainly come back to council for your approval if we are to proceed. One, one important feature, though, is this person can actually advocate for our business community and for everyone else in the city. And so we think, again, having someone who's focused on this issue can maybe bring some truth and light to some of those issues. truth and light to some of those issues and if we need to, help move legislation along one way or the other.
And I just get concerned with the fact that a lot of people think that grant money is free money, but it's really just a re-movement of tax money from people who are paying into grant programs. So it, it all starts with taxes and it raises taxes.
Okay, thank you. Al?
I assume you're working with Winona State on this because they have a sustainability major as part of their structure?
We'll certainly reach out to them. They have also hired a sustainability coordinator for the university and the county has one who's really focused on recycling. So we looked to see if there was a way that we could partner the position, but in my estimation, we would be better off having our own position.
Now, I did look at all the bullet points and job qualifications in our packet. It, it seems to be rather lengthy.
It is.
And, you know, I, I don't know what the job market is for sustainability coordinators out there, but it's, it would be a challenge, I think. But again, if that gets to the job done, then so be it, but I just wish to point that out.
Other comments? George?
Will this person be housed in this building or wastewater treatment?
Yes.
And then what about Paul? Where will he go to?
He stays here as well.
He stays here as well.
But he'll be out in the field. I'm sure Chief will have him busy.
Okay. Anything else? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion Kerry's.
Item 5.3 is a variance request to the Minnesota Department of Transportation, state aid operations to 30 mph vertical curve design standards for the Grand Street project.
I will move to adopt the attached resolution.
I would second.
Motion by Jerry and seconded by Michelle. Questions or comments? If there's not, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Kerry's.
Item 5.4 is an agreement for transfer of entitlements.
I'd make a, a motion to approve the attached resolution transferring the entitlements to Albert Lee, it looks like.
Second. Motion by Michelle and seconded by George. Keith, you want to explain this to the multitudes that are watching this right now?
Mayor, council, back in 2008, when we began the actual work on the airport project, we, Houston County had $123,100 that they didn't need to use on one of their projects and it was made available to the city of Winona for our project. They could have reclaimed that within four years, they didn't. But now because of some work going on at Albert Lee, there's a three-way process going on and Albert Lee could use that money. So we, we essentially had that money available to, to, to give back to somebody and we can't give back to Houston because they can't use it right now, but Albert Lee can, so we're proposing giving the money back to them. And it's not money actually that we received, but it's the right to use money from the federal government.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Al?
Just a comment, I'll support the motion, but Keith mentioned this project before our airport started in 2008 and I just had to say that was eight years ago, eight long years ago, but it's, it's been a great project for the city.
And I think we talked about it for about six years before that.
Okay.
Alright. Well, I think we're ready to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion Kerry's.
Item 7.1 is council concerns.
If I remember right, I think we started down the far end to my left. We'll start with George on my right.
Okay, thank you. I would just like to send out birthday greetings, which the mayor and Senator Miller and I had the chance to share with Marcy Langowski this past Saturday, celebrated 100 years. And we sang happy birthday and I think we're getting better.
We're still not ready for recording.
No. Okay, but happy birthday to Marcy and, and many more, so good group of people there. What's happening in a lot of our, I guess, our yards and things is that it is a Minnesota state statute, statute, not statue, excuse me, and also a city of Winona code in our ordinance is that unlicensed vehicles that do not have current registration are not to be on your property. You can get a notice and you either need to license it properly or the vehicle needs to be removed. I know all of us at council here, mayor as well, too, we get phone calls on vehicles that are parked in yards and grass is growing up around them, they're parked in alleys. But just a reminder to everyone, if you have one of these vehicles, you need to license it properly. You will get a citation and you have, I believe, 10 days to either license it or remove it. So please publish this if we can with the media because people sometimes kind of get, you know, is it right, is it wrong, to let them know that it is a violation. Thank you.
Pam?
Yes, I wanted to provide just a little update. The Winona State, City of Winona Pedestrian Safety Committee has wrapped up its, its school year work. We will begin again in late summer, I believe, but we have been able to, we've worked with the city to, to put new and more bold, more recognizable and consistent crossings on, on a lot of the streets around campus and through town. And we've also been able to increase the lighting around campus, on the streets around campus, and we'll continue to work on that. So I think that was a, really an excellent four months of work on, on the behalf of that committee and will continue. I just wanted to announce also that I will be filing for reelection tomorrow on May 7th, May 17th. And I had a gift here that, that I'm going to pass around. This is from, from Masato, it's cookies from Masato, so I'm sure they're still good one month later.
Sure they are. Thank you, Paul.
I would, just also would like to announce that I will be filing tomorrow for reelection as well.
Thank you. Michelle?
The mayor alluded to an invitation the city received, they have asked us to come again to do a resigning. So check with your principals, check with your coaches. There will be information coming out to them about how you can apply to be one of the students that attends as a basketball player or a cheerleader or possibly even the band. We're working out the details right now on how we're gonna facilitate who's going to be going on the trip. This is a very different trip to the one in April. It, it's, they want us to bring a cultural fair to them. So I guess you'll actually be working for the fair. They want us to put on the fair we have here. So please, if you're interested as a young person, talk with your principal and coaches. That's all I have.
Jerry?
Just one item and the city manager, if you could, in the, in the plans, there's absolutely no hurry on this, but I notice it all the time, we get kind of blind to it, but it'd be on the north side of the park maintenance building. We did talk about this a very long time ago, we were gonna put some type of a fence. Then I think we were looking at another structure, structure too expensive and then it just kind of went away. But if you notice from Sarnia, you'll see a lot of machinery, et cetera. It's just kind of unsightly, a fence or whatever, but in the future, but it's something in the planning, whatever, we decide because it, we need to really address it. Also, the sign that's on that corner, the regular sign, the new ones that we put up, oh, just about 90% of the paint has fallen off that thing already. I don't know if it's the same in all of them, but if you look at the back of it, the paint has fallen off. So if it's bad on one, I'm guessing we may have a paint issue on all of them. Thank you.
And a warranty, I hope. Hope. Al?
The new logo will take care of that. I just like to say that it's an opportunity to participate in a wonderful program or at least be in the audience for a wonderful program on Saturday at the Winona History Center that recognized and highlighted the centennial season of our great Winona Municipal Band from 2015. The, it included the premiere of a video about that year and about the band and it was really marvelous and I think there's a process where it might be shown on some of the local cable systems or at least video copies will be available through band members or something like that.
And at the public library and other sources.
Okay, I wasn't sure of that, but I appreciate that. And for those that missed the announcement last meeting, I'll, I'll join the other folks here that have announced that I will be filing tomorrow to ask first world voters to allow me to represent them on council for the next four years after this.
Okay, thank you.
Under the consent agenda, there are four items, an approval of the minutes from the May 2nd meeting, the final adoption of an ordinance for additional one-hour parking on West Bellevue, a claim against the city by Rochelle Provisky, and a claim by the city for vandalism to two police cars.
I would move approval, but I would like to poll 8-1 for a separate vote with a correction, please.
Second. Motion by Al and seconded by Jerry. Discussion. Hearing none. We'll vote. All those in favor of items 8.2 to 8.4, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Who's Kerry?
The amended, the amendment I wish to make is under the past May 2nd meeting, under council concerns, just to correct the name of my uncle who I mentioned in those concerns who had passed away, his last name is Puck, P-U-C-K, and that's the correction I wish to make.
Okay, thank you. We'll vote on 8.1.
We need a motion.
Oh, a motion.
I'll move. Oh, no?
Okay. We'll just vote on 8.1. No objections. Okay. 8.1, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. 8.1.
Mayor, I move we adjourn.
Second.
Motion by George, seconded by Michelle. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. We adjourn, let's eat cookies.
Let's eat cookies.
I actually want to see the, the.
Oh. I just. No, no, I, I don't know.
Oh, they're, they're silver and gold.
I didn't realize you were hiding back there.